All right, if I could bring this meeting to order and ask you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Selectman McArdle, if you could lead us in a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first up is Wednesday's pet, former first selectman Sherri Stenick. The floor is yours.
Okay, so this little cutie, there are a couple of other ones that's two eleven one on Highway Animal Control. This little kitty is about six weeks old. He's available next week for adoption. And he's a typical little kitty cat that we love to take home for pets. So if anybody here would like to, or anybody at home, please do. Good news is we don't have a lot of dogs down there, so now it's time to get a few good little baby cats.
Is there a number to call?
Number is...
Two five four four eight five seven.
That's two five four...
Four eight five seven.
Four eight five seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And in an equal display of diversity, we have cats and dogs at our animal shelter. All right, thank you very much. Next up, okay to take these, we've all been here, so okay to take these minutes together, or do we want to break them out?
I need to add language to the August 17th.
Okay, so we'll take them, we'll take them one at a time.
Okay.
All right, to consider an act upon the minutes of the regular meeting of August 17th, 2016, this item was postponed. Do, may I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second, well, I'm going to make a motion.
Second it and then can it.
Second it, okay.
Second it.
Second it.
Good. Any comments, discussion, or amendments?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add the following sentences...
Okay.
...to the draft minutes. Do I read them?
It's probably best why don't you for now.
Okay, so I'd like to add after the sentence, they are looking into future dredging and adding more slips with possible funding. Mr. Lombardo and the board members discussed funding through state permitting process and dredging concerns. Selectmen, I'd like to add, Selectman McArdle asked if the dredging is a concern, and Mr. Lombardo said it needs to be done and will be requesting $700,000. He said it has been done twice in the last 10 years. Selectman McArdle asked if there is a written plan for the marina. Mr. Lombardo said there is not. He said he, along with Mr. Michelangelo, Mr. Kenny, Engineering and Parks and Rec Commission, make the decisions together. Selectman McArdle asked how the state is involved in the dredging process, and Mr. Lombardo replied and stated that it is very involved and a long permitting process with the state. First selectman Tetra said where they put the dredged material is a big concern and part of the problem for Fairfield and all coastal Connecticut towns. He recently met with the new chair of the Port Authority of Connecticut towards Southport Harbor and discussed Fairfield's concerns. Selectman McArdle asked what account the marina revenue goes into. Mr. Lombardo said it goes to the general fund. End of new wording.
Okay, that's a first. Is there a second for that amendment?
I'll make a second.
Great. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Nope.
Any comments from the public on the amendment, and the amendment only? Seeing none, we're back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And Sheila, here that is, just so you have that. So is there, now the item as amended is before us. Are we ready to vote on the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All right. Next up, to consider an act upon the minutes of the regular meeting of September 7th. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second it.
Any comments or amendments?
Nope.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Very good. All right, next up, a resignation. This is for information only from the Parking Authority. Ronald D. Pine, Republican, from 36 Hylon Road, term of 1112 to 1117, resigned effective October 3rd, 2016. We want to thank Mr. Pine for his service and also recognize that he's going from the frying pan into the fire. He signed up and has been appointed to the RTM. Next item up, a report, an update from the Art Place Gallery.
Uh-huh.
You're up. Would you like to come up to the podium and...
Will I be right here?
Yep.
Is this it?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, I will, okay.
You can, you can speak to the board. There's a camera over here that'll catch you, and as long as you speak to the board and speak loudly, then the microphone on the podium will catch you, so...
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm accustomed as I am, obviously. I need a little education here. I'm Florence Zolin. I'm co-president of Art Place Gallery at this moment in time, and my co-president, Diane Pollack, is also here with me this evening. We are extremely proud because this is our 35th year of existence, all those years being in Fairfield. And so Mr. Tetra wanted me to just give a little history of our time here in the town. And all those 35 years have been, as I said, in Fairfield. The first place that we were was in the train station in Southport, and we were there for 27 years. When we first took the space, it was being used, I think, as a town storage room, basically. There were all kinds of things left over, I believe, from parades. There was, I know, a big machet, paper machet horse that was involved, that we had to get everything out of there and put it together with sheet rock walls and so forth for a gallery. We were extremely proud to do that. When we opened, it was this enormous storm weekend in Connecticut, all over the East Coast, I might say. Governor Grasso closed all towns in the entire state, so that obviously our opening weekend did not go as planned, but people didn't even trudge over there, amazingly so, in the snow to see what was happening. But we did open for good the following weekend, to a huge crowd, and we drew people for our exhibits ever since for those years. We enjoyed the process of getting the space from the town. As a matter of fact, there was a town architect who helped us design what we would do in the space and how the work would go forward. And he actually moved the wall from the ticket window booth forward so that it gave us an extra alcove of exhibit space. And that was something that we appreciated because obviously artists need all the wall space you can get. So we did that for many years. We then, there was another side room, you know, there's, if you look at the station, there's a door on the far right, and that was into a luggage room that had been rented also by someone else from the town, who, someone who rented it from the town for his own business. And he had a business there, but at one point, a little drama here, one of our people who came in to sit the gallery found shell casings and bullets on the floor. And something had happened next door that was hole through the wall up onto the molding around the window. So that rental was over, he disappeared, and we asked if we could have the space. So we then incorporated that extra space into our gallery. And one of our artists, who was a wonderful sculptor and artist, was also a construction person, and he completely redid that room for us, for our extra little space, which we really appreciated tremendously. So we were very happy there until the fire. And I believe that was in '07, I think early in January, the first week in January, and one of our artists had just installed his exhibit that, the day before, the very day before. And suddenly, I don't know who called me early in the morning saying, "The gallery is on fire." We all went down, as many as we could do, to watch the firemen put out the rest of the fire. I know they had been there all night long. And for amazing reason, they all, the firemen carried out Donald Axarode's work. And he, they saved almost all of his pieces. I think he lost two pieces. He had installed 40 pieces. And while the glass pieces were blackened and had to be redone and everything else, but they did save the artwork, so that was amazing because it was an enormous amount of woodcut prints that he does. So at that point, we were homeless and not knowing what to do next. We were amazingly invited by many people. The Peacock Library called us, called me the next day practically, and the gallery director there at the time, Dan Snyderaker, offered us two months in the summer for us to show there. So we divided our group because their gallery is very small. So we invited, divided the group into half, and half of us showed in one month and the other half showed the next month. Then we were invited to show somewhere in Greenwich. We were invited to show at the Waveney House in New Canaan. So many people had invited us, which is very gratifying, actually, and we were happy to do so because obviously we didn't have our own space. So we were looking around, we looked everywhere, and suddenly we were made aware that we could find the space next to the community theater, the movie house in downtown Fairfield, right in the middle of town. The woman who had rented the space next to the movie theater was going to do something else, and she was, had been renting it, she still was on a lease, and she had an option to renew the lease, so we sublet it from her. And we were there for about three years, I believe. And she had said she was never coming back, she was leaving that space, but suddenly she decided she was coming back and we should leave before the holiday season because she wanted to come back and be part of the holiday season. So again, we were homeless briefly, but we did have to move very quickly. So I think that's when Ellen Hyde Phillips asked us after the community theater when we're homeless again to share her space. She had a business space off the Coast Road in Fairfield. And we were there.
It was reversed. If that's okay.
But not, yes, okay. At any rate, no, no, that was correct because we were in Ellen's for about a year, and a very small place. But amazingly, we were able to hang work in the hall and sort of halfway up the stairwell and in the small back room where she had her business going on. And that was really well appreciated for us, that we had some spot, actually, some space at all. And Ellen was aware that the Fairfield Arts Council was going out in the space where we are now, which is part of the Fairfield Theater Company in the front of that space that they now have. And Ellen called me one night and said the Fairfield Arts Council was going out, was not going to be in existence anymore, that we should call about the space, that I should call the lawyer who was working for the theater company. I said, "It's dinnertime, I don't want..." She said, "Call him right this minute." So I did, and he said, "Fine." He thinks, you know, that should be for us. And somehow, we, I think we had meetings here with you and with several other people, and it was determined that we would move into where we are now. So we've been here in this space at the Fairfield Theater Company for about three years. And we have, we've enjoyed the space, we enjoy the spa, well, it's a nice space. If you've been in, I don't know if any of you have, but at any rate, it is a lovely space to exhibit in. We're very happy to be there. And so this year is our 35th year. We had a nice 35th show in August, calling it Now and Then, so that each artist put in something that they may have done maybe not 35 years ago, but maybe 30 or 20, and then what are they doing now, so that you could see whose work has changed tremendously or not at all, or what kind of work they were doing 20 or 30 years ago and what kind of work they're doing now. And that's, so that's where we are at this point in time.
Okay, so right now, you're in the, basically the entrance to Stage One for the Fairfield Theater Company.
Yes, Stage One, yes.
Down on Sanford Street.
Yes.
And what days are you open?
Well, that's a good question, because the box office for the theater is actually open at 12 noon, I think, every day. So anyone could actually come in at 12 noon and stay till 5:00, because that's when they leave there. Now, our hours have been, we're sort of in the, in a flux position here of changing hours, but it has been Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 12 to 4:00, and Sundays, 2 to 5:00. But we have been changing, that it's going to be more flexible, but I know that people come, because the box office is open, people can just come in at any time, the lights are on, and they can look at the art.
Yeah, and I know that's when, I've taken advantage of it, because when I've gone to some events at Stage One, and I've gotten there a little bit early...
Yes.
...I have time to step back and peruse the art and the works.
Oh, great, okay.
And I think it's a great addition and a great synergy with Stage One and the FTC and the theater company.
Right, right. It is an interesting combination because people who come in, go through us as sort of the lobby, they see it. We've had functions going on there in the, in our space before the theater program begins, and even we have had a function or two of our own in our space that was not art-related necessarily, but we...
So it provides great exposure for the artists that are part of your group.
I think so, yes, it does. Now, we do have, you know, sometimes we have to, you know, just kind of coincide with the art, with the theater company about timing and when they have people coming in to practice for the band, warm-up or whatever it is that they do. I know, I think we may have, I don't know if anybody else has questions?
Well, why don't I ask my colleagues if you have any questions?
Well, I have enjoyed the artwork also, even during like intermissions at the shows.
Yes.
Time to walk around.
Oh, right, during intermission?
Really enjoyed that.
Okay, and you really do look at the art?
We do.
Okay. Well, sometimes we wonder because we're thinking, people are there, of course, there's a bar going on and so forth, but it's nice to know that you actually do look at the art, and that makes us feel good, yes.
I too have seen the art, it's fantastic. It's a good use of space right there, and applaud your 35 years.
Thank you, that's very nice to hear.
So congratulations on your 35 years. Thank you for stopping in today to update us on what's been going on.
All right, well, it's our pleasure.
And good luck to...
I don't know if my co-president wants to add something?
No.
No?
That's all right. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Next item, to review and approve the registrar of voters' salaries. We can make a motion, I think, once we get through this, simply put, we've had a chance to talk to the registrars, listen to their input on this, we've had a chance to review data from other towns, we've had a chance to talk to our human resources director and get his input as to some of the legal issues surrounding this. So since all that has happened at prior meetings, I'll open it up to any further discussion.
Well, I think last meeting we left off, there were a couple loose ends we wanted to tie up. A brief conversation I had with the finance director, I reviewed some of the notes. I think, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion to raise the registrar voter salaries today to $37,500 with a 2.5% increase in the start of year three, based upon what I've seen.
Okay, just to be clear, the $37,500 includes the $2,500 that we reduced previously, so that...
Right.
Just asking.
Right, right.
So that 35, $37,500 would be one number, and then, and that would take effect in January of 2017?
Right.
And you're saying in January of 2019, you would, you're proposing that be increased by 2.5%?
A 2.5% increase.
Okay. All right. All right, Sheila, do you have that down? Is that, any, is there a second for some?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
No, I, you know, I think the registrars work hard, and after having time the last couple of months to go through all of the information and talk to them, I feel comfortable with this.
Okay. Yes, I hear you say. Any comments from the public? If you would, please come up the podium and state your name.
Holly Van Eetje.
In front, if you could say it again, we aren't at the mic.
Holly Van Eetje.
Yep.
Support staff for the registrars. I just wanted to attest that the workload has been great in these last couple of years. I've been with the town for a few years, and it has ramped up immensely. The registrars have done a wonderful job keeping up with it, with the demands from the Secretary of State. It is not the job that it was when I took the job years and years ago. It is asking much, much more for the registrars. And Roger and Matthew have done a wonderful job trying to keep up with it. So I just want to make sure everybody understood that it, I've seen it, and it has definitely ramped up immensely. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? All right, then it's back to the board. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And Sheila, you have that down, correct? All right, next, on to item eight. To here, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Resolved that First Selectman Michael C. Tetra is empowered and authorized to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the town of Fairfield, an agreement with the state of Connecticut and the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for a 2016 America the Beautiful Urban Forestry Grant in an amount not to exceed $4,300, the local match being in-kind services approved in the 2016-2017 Department of Works budget. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion, or Mr. Minder, do you want to fill us in on any of this?
Jeff Minder, tree warden. Mary Ho is our chair of our forestry committee. Just a brief background on the grant, the American Beautiful Grant is awarded each year by the Connecticut DEP Division of Forestry. It's awarded to municipalities to help improve their urban forest and promote educational projects as well. Once again, we have been awarded it, awarded this grant to further the continued work that we did with the American Beautiful Grant in 2015. That grant was, what we did was, we created informational signage throughout the complex here in the town complex, and we're planning on moving throughout the town in different areas to help promote not only tree, the importance of trees, but pinpoint some other important parts of our town as well. I've included in this packet, and Mary has more packets for you, this is a layout of the town hall green in the area that we have the signs and the actual signage where they're located and how they, how they read. Just an example of one of the signs in front of the Charter Oak and in front of the town hall green with a brief explanation of the oak. There are QR codes on there where you can go into it and further the information.
Okay.
Mary has it there.
I guess, right off the top, I'd ask two things. Is the Historic District Commission being consulted on the signs and the placement?
They have worked with, our forestry has worked with the bike and pedestrian committee, as well as the museum and Historic District and economic development on areas where these signs are best suited.
Okay, and in terms of the placement of the signs?
Yes.
When they're being placed on greens or areas that are used by other groups, I'm specifically looking at the Old Town Hall, because we use that for festivals and other arrangements?
Correct.
I'd like to see that placement before those are placed to make sure it doesn't interfere with any of the ongoing operations that we have.
Absolutely, absolutely. We met with the Historic Committee as well, and met with Ellen Gould and...
Yeah, that's, that's one level improvement, but they're not as concerned about the operation, how the green is used by other groups.
Absolutely. There will be no more signs going on, on the town hall green in the future. That was the last one put up.
Okay, my question would be, not only the green, but any other space that's being used? I guess I'd just like to see what is going on before you do that.
Yes, absolutely, by all means, absolutely.
Thank you, just to make sure it doesn't impact any, oh, before you go.
Yes.
Any questions for my colleagues?
Makes sense, they're nice, I've seen them out there.
Yes, thank you.
They look great. Nice addition.
Thank you.
I like them a lot, I do. I'm a big fan of this type of sort of advertising. I'd like to see, you know, the history walk, it helps people get out and, you know, it's almost, almost sort of like Pokemon Go for people without, do Pokemon Go.
Low-tech.
Low-tech Pokemon Go.
Can you capture all the signs?
Thank you, thank you for doing this, it's good.
All right. Any other questions from here?
No.
Any comments from the public?
Okay.
Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Minder. And the signs are very well done.
Thank you.
Good props, Jeff.
Yeah. Thanks to Jeff.
Mary, another, another skill set for your resume.
I know.
Next up, item nine, from the, also from the Director of Public Works. To here, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Resolved that Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, be and hereby is authorized to sign the agreement entitled Master Municipal Agreement for Preliminary Engineering Projects. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hurley, are you going to step us through what this is all about?
Sure. Good afternoon, Selectmen. I'm Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager for the town of Fairfield. The item before you involves a resolution that will authorize the First Selectman to sign the Master Municipal Agreement for Preliminary Engineering Projects, sometimes referred to as MMA. This is a 10-year agreement in which it's a third of a series of MMAs, I believe there'll be four, designed to streamline the DOT grant agreement process. By signing the MMAs, essentially a standard or a master agreement with most of the municipalities, the grant agreements would go directly to the DOT Commissioner's Office rather than through the Attorney General. The MMAs contain boilerplate language that should govern all municipal design projects. Any of the financial matters and specific information involving these projects will be set forth in a project authorization letter, or PAL. These PALs will go through the standard Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM process. Historically, the town has approved and utilized previous MMAs for construction and rights-of-way phases. I think they were approved in 2012 and in the summer of 2014. The town attorney and I have reviewed these and this and the previous MMAs and realize that the agreements do contain the standard language that is typical of standard DOT state grant agreements with the town, and have no issues with the town signing these agreements. The town attorney is here if there were any specific questions as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions for my colleagues?
No.
No.
All right. So I understand, as you said, we've done similar agreements with the state in other aspects or phases of work. This is just kind of a continuation. It basically makes the agreement for projects go much quicker and much simpler, so we can focus on the project, not all the legalese and boilerplate within the overall agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, from the Fire Chief. To here, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Fire Chief. Resolved that Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, is hereby authorized to expend in name of and on behalf of the town of Fairfield up to $164,025 to purchase firefighter safety equipment and emergency medical service equipment. 90% of said costs to be reimbursed by a Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $149,114. And further resolved that the First Selectman is hereby authorized on behalf of the town to accept said grant, and further resolved that the First Selectman is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of Fairfield to execute any and all necessary documents to secure said grant. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion. No, I'll second it.
A second, thank you. The item is before us. Chief?
Yes, Dennis McCarthy, Fire Chief. There's an opportunity for the department to acquire some new equipment, the first being the cardiac devices, which is an external automatic cardiac machine... The first being the cardiac devices, which is an external automatic cardiac machine. We'll buy five of them, one for each of the apparatus. What it allows us to do is improve the quality of CPR, particularly in transport of the patient from the home to the ambulance, and from the ambulance into the, to the hospital. It makes it more effective, the CPR compressions are more effective with the device than we can do manually, and it's safer for fire and EMS personnel in a moving ambulance trying to provide CPR. So this is a good opportunity for us to acquire that equipment through the grant. The second is firefighter personal escape systems. We have seen, over time, the fire, fires have progressed more rapidly, intensified more rapidly, giving firefighters less opportunity to get above the fire, to do search and rescue, but also placing them at great risk when they are in those rescue modes. There have been some tragic instances where firefighters have been trapped above the fire floor without ladders to effect an escape, and this will allow firefighters to perform self-rescue from those circumstances. It is a simple device of a rope, a descender, and a hook. The hook is put on a radiator, a pipe, or the window sill, and the fire, fighter can lower himself, lower himself out the window. The two projects are total $164,000, $164,025. The local match is $14,911. We've identified two accounts for that. One, the rescue equipment portion. We have a rescue truck budget that was approved several years ago. We bought the rescue truck. The total budget was $775,000. We'll use $13,000 out of that, the remaining funds out of that budget, for part of the local match. The balance of the local match of $1,911 will come from this year's fire department equipment account.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I do. I have two quick questions. One, so, one of my issues during the budget time was, we're stocking our fire trucks for medical rescue. Now we're buying CPR. Does the ambulance, AMR, do they have the CPR compression?
They do not. Some do. AMR, to my knowledge, does not. We arrive on scene prior to AMR in many cases, and I would venture to say in most cases. The way that our system is designed is to get police and fire on scene first. It allows us to start CPR when it's needed, and then team up with EMS on their arrival.
Right. And that goes to the conversation you and I have had a couple times before about, should we be in the medical, in the ambulance business, basically, so that we actually capture the revenue dollars? Here, again, we're taking equipment, and we're putting in our fire trucks, but the ambulance company, you know, isn't required to have the same equipment. So, we're stocking our fire trucks better than we're actually the ambulance, which is there. So, one of my big concerns is that the passoff from the fire department, after, you know, we've taken this, we're now taking our resident, who pays an awful lot of taxes, and we're passing it off to the hands of a private company who isn't as well-equipped as other towns, and the services that other towns offer, because they are supplying and making sure state-of-the-art equipment is in all of their ambulances. Have we looked at all, or have you looked at all this year to move towards that model?
Yes. And, selectmen and I have talked about the way forward. We have a number of projects, I think we talked about it at the Board of Finance meeting, a number of projects that are coming up that are significant, that significantly impact fire department operations, but overall department budget. We have requested in the waterfall, $200,000, to conduct studies for a number of those initiatives that would include EMS.
Oh, is that would definitely be part of the $200,000?
That, yes. And that will go through the capital project approval process, and if approved, will be available in March. We're working on an RFP right now so that we can advertise and receive proposals back that we can act on if those funds are approved.
And, again, that's one of my concerns, that we're taking our residents who are injured, sick, and we're passing off to a private company when we have gone out of our way as a town to make sure they're safe and secure here in Fairfield. And, it's like, we're not closing it. And also, by not closing it, we're also missing out on the revenue, which you build the insurance companies for. So, that's going to be an ongoing issue with me when I see stuff like this come up. And this is a grant, so we're not paying, you know, we're paying 10% of it. Another thing I noticed was, the, and this is just the, the bailout kits--
Yep.
--for 98 firefighters?
Correct.
Does it, I don't know, would this be something that we would also do for the volunteer fire department and the people who are on call? Could we lump that in there with the overall grant number to make sure that they have the proper equipment as well?
So, we have not submitted grant requests that have included the volunteers. They are an independent constituted organization. They're not legitimately part of the Fairfield Fire Department under the statute. And where it is appropriate, we include them in grant, or in our operations planning. We don't have them, they have been not, they haven't been identified as interior structural firefighting to a large degree. There are a very small number of qualified interior firefighters, so we do need to include them in the grant for this, for this project.
All right. That's definitely a detail I don't, I'm not aware of.
Yep.
But that was just one of my things. We have an opportunity to get 90% paid for. I mean, I just look at it as a golden opportunity to make sure everybody is included in that overall number. No questions for me.
And if I can just add, I'd like to commend Assistant Chief Bissin, certainly for getting the grant approved by his perseverance. This is the third year that he has applied for this grant. Some of our neighboring communities have received them in the past. We're successful this year due to his hard work.
So this is the first year we got the grant?
For this grant, yeah. Yeah, we have received other fire act grants in the past, but we have tried to get this for the past three years.
Couple of questions. One, how are these powered?
Battery. So, they're purchased, they're battery-powered. We are purchasing a battery backup, so there'll be a spare battery on charge, and what we switched out, as we switch out, radio batteries and other batteries at the beginning of each shift.
Okay, thank you. Because that, the question obviously goes back to AEDs, and the number one issue that they would fail is lack of current batteries. So, we have a planned maintenance program for all the town facilities where we have AEDs right now, obviously including fire. I think you guys were probably better on that than the rest of town.
I would hope so.
But, so I wanted to make sure we had them as part of the regular maintenance agreement. And is there any special training that's needed?
Yes. So, part of this, so, there will be training for both of the acquisitions. Certainly, the vendor will provide training for the cardiac compression devices. We will hire a trainer in and use the new training facility at One Rod Highway to train all of the firefighters on the bailout system. It's an acquired skill, you're asking someone to jump out a window. And there is a certain amount of confidence that you need to build in the system that you're relying on. So we will, we'll do that when they come in. The training grounds, we expect to be open in May, so it'll coincide very nicely with this project. We have purchased 23 units that will serve as training units. So, the unit that the firefighters carry will be a sealed kit and will only be used in case of extreme emergency.
Okay, very good. Any further comments from the board?
I think, and I've seen it, firefighters carry so much stuff for people who don't see them in action. They are like bogged down with a lot of equipment. So I hope, I hope things get lighter as technology develops.
Every time something gets lighter, we add another device or a piece of equipment into their toolbox.
But it's like, it's like a traveling office. It's like a desk, all this stuff I have on my desk.
I would, I would, hopefully not the desk too, though, but I would take it one further step. I had a chance to participate in firefighter 101, going down to the fire training center, going through five different stations, including going into burning buildings or simulated burning, though it was real fire, so it was, and tremendous respect for what the firefighters go through, including having the breathing apparatus, being in a low-visibility environment with a smoke-filled room, having to search that room, looking for a body or survivor, a person that was in there. And I think your guys, one, did a great job of taking us through all that, and importantly, keeping us safe while we did that. But there isn't a better understanding, and I encourage both my colleagues here to, if you get a chance, take advantage of that.
When the new training grounds open, I think that'd be a great opportunity for us to do that again.
I'm definitely just--
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
The CPR device, that actually goes with the patient, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so--
And many times, you know, to your point earlier, many times we go with the patient too. When CPR is being administered, quite often, a firefighter travels with the patient just because of the workload that is needed in the ambulance en route to the hospital.
I noticed that over 80 times this year alone that we've done that, so that's good.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Chief, thank you very much, and good luck with the new gear.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item 11, from the town attorney. And this requires RTM approval and a report from Town Planning and Zoning Commission. To hear, consider an act upon the following resolution. Resolved that the town of Fairfield sell the property known as 2164 Fairfield Beach Road to Rosero, DeVico, and Annette DeVico for the sum of $55,000, as more particularly set forth in a real estate sales agreement between said parties. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
The item is now before us. Mr. Lesser, can you step us through what is going on here?
I don't know if this map is included in your package. There's a little piece of land down on Fairfield Beach Road, and they show it as two-hundredths of an acre, two-hundredths of an acre, which is like 860 square feet. It's tiny, and it's, and it is of no use to the town except there is a drainage pipe that runs across it that is of use to the town and the town maintains. There's also a bulkhead. This is, the piece is on the creek side, so there's a bulkhead on the creek that the town has to maintain, or is supposed to maintain. So, it was decided to sell this piece, and an RFP went out asking for bids, and there were two bids. The high bidder bid $55,000, and that's what we're here before. I did a contract, I think the contract is part of the backup. The contract is subject to a couple of conditions, the first being that this body approve it, RTM approve it, and the second is that there's going to be an easement. They're going to have to give us an easement back, and that's what that map is for, to show where the easement is. And Scott Lehman said, "Look, the piece is so small, we're going to make the easement cover the whole piece," so that there won't be a question of getting our equipment on the piece if we have to dig up the pipe. And there's also a provision in the contract which survives the closing that says that the owner will maintain the bulkhead. So, that's about all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any comments from the board?
I haven't had an opportunity to get down there to look at it, and that's one of my, I'd like to look at it. I think I know the property, what we're talking about, because I spent a lot of time jogging up and down, or walking up and down the beach this year. Are you sure there's no uses for the town, whether--
Yes.
--it's going to put a bench there so people have access to water, can fish off of it, can pocket park?
According to Brian Carey, no. He says, "We just assume not have the liability, have to maintain the bulkhead. It's of no use." And if you go down there to look, I think you'll see that one of, the abutting landowner who was, I think the low bidder here, didn't get it, has put, I think he might have fenced it, he might have put some grass in there.
There's a chain across it that says, "No trespassing."
Yeah, so, we'll have to deal with that.
Which potentially refers to him.
Right.
So, yeah, Brian says, "There's no use." He said, "We just assume, get rid of it, not have the liability. We just want the ability to maintain that pipe if we have to do it."
Would there be any objection if I proposed tailing this for two weeks?
Postponing it to a date certain, being the next fourth or second meeting?
Yes.
I don't have an objection?
No, I don't have objections.
Stanton, does that cause any issues with the--
The contract is specifically subject to your approval, so, once, you know, nothing happens until you approve it.
Okay.
So, if that's a motion?
That is a motion, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. So the motion to postpone is before us. Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
No.
Ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stanton, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item up, to consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount recommended.
I'd like to make an amendment.
To consider an act upon tax, in the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Good. Any amendments?
I'd like to make an amendment, please. I'd like to change the amount to $10,409.72, followed by a period.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The item is amended, is before us. Any further discussion? All in favor of the item?
Aye.
Thank you. That's done. Next up, to hear, consider an act upon any other business that shall promptly come before this board. Any other business?
I just asked a question, sure. What is the status of the committee we were putting together, we thought about putting together earlier this spring? It's the downtown development committee?
Not sure by that name. Strategic plan, perhaps?
Strategic planning committee, yes.
The, we had to, because we didn't get that done by June 30th, we had to wait for the Board of Finance to basically roll over, or agree to roll over the $100,000 for the consultant. They just did that a couple weeks ago, so that will be coming back before us.